Good morning. I would like to call to order this special council meeting today, December 10, 2024, and it is approximately 10:05 a.m. We will have our invocation by Pastor Rob Berry, a wonderful graduate of Calhoun High School, a star athlete, and also sang in the choir with me under the direction of Ms. Marquis Zell, and then after that, we'll have the Pledge of Allegiance. Thank you.
Mr. President?
I just want to acknowledge, Mr. Berry, this gentleman has been a hard worker in the community, especially over near the Rose Avenue, Robertson Street area as a part of their church. They're just a wonderful thing so that I just want to acknowledge them, and we have another cleanup this weekend, too. Thank you, sir.
Please, sir.
Thank you. As we get ready to pray, I just ask you to hold near and dear to your heart the desire that you have for the change to come in Jackson, and let's come together and pray for that. So let's bow our heads and pray. Father God, we just thank you once again for this day and this opportunity to stand together in this room, and even those that are, Father, watching via Zoom, Lord, I just thank you first and foremost that we get the opportunity to come together, and I pray that as we do this, we come in one heart, one voice, and one mind. Father, as you said in your words, Psalms 133, where there is unity, you command a blessing. So, Father, we just speak for unity, not only in this meeting, but even, Lord, for our seated leaders, that as they continue to hold hands together and walk side by side, we just thank you that as a city, we see unity, and from there, you command the blessing to move the city of Jackson forward, to be a city that's shining bright, Father, not only for the state of Mississippi, but for even for other nations and states to see how a city can come together, and when they do, so much can be done to lift the city up and move it forward in the direction that you call it to. Thank you for your grace, your peace upon this meeting, as well as your wisdom and understanding for the right strategies to bring about the necessary change, Father, that will be sustainable for years to come. We thank you for it. In Jesus' name we pray. Amen.
Let's face the flag. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Colleagues, are there any introductions?
Councilman Hartley?
Yes, thank you, Mr. Vice President. I just want to introduce the new SWAC champions, Jackson State University.
Anyone else? Councilman Banks?
Yeah, I want to chime in with my colleague, not new SWAC champions, but three-time SWAC champions, and want to say congratulations to Coach TCL Moore, and then also my former boommate, Dr. Little, for a well-deserved and good season all the way around.
Just a little point of clarity to this, three times in four years.
That's right.
There we go. Counselor McClay, you have anything?
All right, thank you. We're going to go ahead and move to a public hearing for item number two. Clerk, read the item, please.
Order requesting the city council review and vote to approve the signed variance request for Dollar Tree to reface the existing non-conforming 60-square-foot ground sign and erect a 96-square-foot building sign within a CMU-1 zone, which only allows 15 square feet in sign area for monument and building signs.
All right, colleagues, there is no motion for this, okay? Sir, please state your name for the record.
Terry Coleman, the Sign and License Division, and this request is simply asking to reuse the existing sign that's already there. This property is on CMU-1 at this present time. It used to be on C2. So when the previous company left, they would like to just reuse the existing signage.
Okay.
Excuse me, the sign structure for the ground sign, they want to increase the building size.
Okay. Thank you. Any questions or comments, colleagues? All right, we're going to move now to the next one, the public hearing, item number three. Clerk?
Order requesting the city council review and vote to deny the signed variance request for Dollar Tree to reface the existing non-conforming 60-square-foot ground sign and erect a 96-square-foot building sign within a CMU-1 zone, which only allows a 15 square feet in sign area for monument and building signs.
It's not you?
Yes, it is.
Is there anyone here to speak in favor of this ordinance? Come forward, please. Yeah, I'm here, man. And please state your name for the record.
Amy Andrews.
In the mic, please.
Amy Andrews.
Thank you.
So there was a CVS there previously, and they're just wanting to use the existing pipeline so that it's visible from different areas of the street. If they were to put a monument sign there, which is like six feet tall, there's really, first, there's really nowhere to put it unless they take all of the shrubbery down, and then you really wouldn't be able to see it. And the channel letters they're wanting to put on the building, they're wanting at least 96 square feet so that they can, you know, be seen.
Okay. You have anything?
So you're in denial?
I'm sorry.
Are you in favor or denial of this ordinance?
In favor.
Okay.
Yes.
Thank you, ma'am. Is there anyone else here to speak in favor of this ordinance? Anyone here to speak in denial of this ordinance? Okay, thank you. Now, colleagues, we're going to move to agenda item number 20. Clerk, please read the item.
Order requesting the city council review and vote to approve the signed variance request for Dollar Tree to reface the existing non-conforming 60-square-foot ground sign and erect a 96-square-foot building sign within a CMU-1 zone, which only allows 15 square feet in sign area for monument and building signs.
So moved.
Second. Okay, it's been moving improperly. Second, any questions or comments?
Question.
Yes, sir. Mr.?
Thank you.
How do you feel? How do you feel about this particular item?
Well, I can only say that it's an existing monument, a ground sign that's already there that was utilized by the previous business, and as well as the square footage, they had additional square footage, but if it follows the CMU-1 regulation, it would be downsized. So they're just asking to utilize what's already there as far as a ground sign, and they're just going to increase the building sign slightly.
Are we creating a precedent?
I would say not because it was already there previously to the previous business, and the zone changed, and they're just asking to utilize what was previously already there.
So you're comfortable with this?
I have... An awkwardness, so I'm just going to stick with saying that this is something that was previously there, and the rules and regs that was there before the ordinance change allowed this use of this ground sign, as well as additional building signage.
I'm not trying to put you on the spot to be biased, but as council members, you know, sometimes we could make the wrong decision, and this might be a good business move, but sometimes we need the experts, and I know I can say you're an expert. You've been with the city probably about 50 years.
Been a while.
But there's no, you don't feel any reservations, let me use that word, if we move forward with this.
I have no issues with it. Thank you. All right, Mr. Banks?
No, no, I'm good.
You're good? All right. Thank you. Just, Mr. Hartley?
Yeah, just one thing. This is, you're staff, right?
Yes.
Okay, so this is a staff recommendation?
Yes.
Okay, thank you. Any more questions or comments? Hearing none. All in favor? Seven, zero? Say zero. Oh, that's right. Sorry. All right, now we'll move to public comments. Each citizen has three minutes. Three minutes, and will be given a 30-second warning, as well as a time-up signal from the clerk. First, we will have Mike Johnson, back pay from the seat of Jackson. Is Mr. Johnson here? Mr. Mike Johnson? Mr. Mike Johnson?
Okay, Ms. Monica Butler? Thanks to city Midtown community. State your name for the record, please, and turn your mic on. Hit the button there. Thank you.
Hi, my name is Monica Butler. I'm a resident of the Midtown community in Ward 7, and I just want to say greetings, city council members and distinguished seated leaders. I stand before you today with gratitude and pride to acknowledge the efforts of Midtown Partners in collaboration with the City of Jackson and Midtown Neighborhood Association to secure the grant for the Midtown Crime Deterrence Initiative. This achievement would not have been possible without the unwavering support of Stephanie King, Samantha Graves, and others in the Planning Department, and Deputy Chief Griselle with the Jackson Police Department. Their commitment to making our community safer is truly commendable. The Midtown Crime Deterrence Initiative is a groundbreaking project aimed at enhancing the security of our neighborhood through innovative technology. The initiative comprises two main components. First, we purchased and are in the process of installing two commercial blue light cameras that will connect to the real-time Command Center. Second, we purchased and paid for the electrician to install video doorbell cameras, or ring cameras, as most people know them, for residents in the community. And then, thirdly, we cleared some blighted areas within the community. I must add, at the time of this initiative, we were the first community, as far as our research showed, to launch this initiative within Mississippi. The blue light cameras will serve as a critical tool for real-time monitoring. Meanwhile, the video doorbell cameras for our residents will empower them to monitor their homes and surroundings, creating an interconnected network of vigilance throughout our community. A key aspect of this initiative was the educational component led by Deputy Chief Griselle and Officer Sam Brown. Their informative sessions equipped our residents with the knowledge to effectively use the technologies, along with new JPD initiatives, thereby maximizing their benefits. The feedback from our community has been overwhelmingly positive, with many residents expressing their appreciation for the increased peace of mind that these measures provided. We're excited about this initial success of this initiative and are eager to expand our efforts. Midtown Partners and the Neighborhood Association are seeking additional funds to enhance the capabilities. By continuing to invest in these advancements, we can ensure that Midtown remains a safe and thriving community. We thank you for your continued support and for providing us with the platform to implement these vital safety measures. Together, we, along with law enforcement, can make a significant impact on the safety and well-being of our residents. And this is just a copy of the flyer. I did provide the clerk with handouts for everybody, and then here's just some pictures showing Deputy Chief Griselle and Officer Brown as they were doing some info sessions with our residents. I had toured the Command Center many times, along with other residents.
Ms. Butler.
Uh-huh.
Thank you. And I really appreciate the feedback, and the clerk got, thank you so much. They're trying to stick to the three minutes. All right, thank you. Ms. Shirley Lee, abandoned housing and housing project? Y'all gonna let us stand up there by us, sir?
Good morning.
Good morning.
I am Shirley Lee from Northwest Hills Homeowners Association. I brought a few members with me this morning. As you can see, some of the others are not standing up, but it's women. Women. We're here this morning for Northwest Hills Homeowners Association, okay? The first item we're going to speak about is this new development that's taking place at Northside, no, Mega Everest Drive and 220 Highway, being developed by Rowan Oak Development Company. I understand that they are partnering with Jackson Housing Authority, per Mrs. Cox. My question is, if you have an established homeowners association, aren't we supposed to be notified that these apartments are going to be built this close to us? Question. Mrs. Cox said they will be affordable. Affordable. Is this HUD, low income, or what is it that they're building there? No one notified us that this, Mrs. Cox said it was 46 apartments. Mr. Strange said it's 64. So they're not on the same page with how many apartments that they're going to build. We are on tap to make Northwest Hill a safe and beautiful place to live. So according to Marcus Connolly from Code Service, it is zoned for multipurpose use, that particular area. I don't know if you all are familiar with the area, but it's a little area that's kind of tucked back up off the highway there. So they could have built apartments anywhere else instead of developing that green space for apartments. We need a grocery store in that area. We don't need more people looking for food in that area. There was no signage at first saying what is being built on the property. The traffic engineer, Mr. Chee, said they wanted to take it out to the interstate, but he refused to let them do that, and he brought it back around to come through the service station parking lot there. So the project is going forward. Can we do anything to stop it at this point? There again, I'm coming back to, we were not notified that these apartments are being built, and also, when you talk about affordable housing, what do they mean? Is it paid by HUD? Those are my questions.
Did you want to talk about the abandoned housing before you?
Yes, okay. The house at 3533 Northside Drive to be demolished. I got a case number here. It's gone through adjudication, it's free of asbestos, and it was approved by the city council to be torn down. It has not been torn down yet. On February 6, 2024, at St. John's Church on Mega Everest, at the meeting, Mayor Lamumba said that this would be a priority to get this house torn down. The house is still sitting there with caution tape around it.
Okay, Ms. Lee, I got him. Call your time. You know I love you. Mr. Banks, you had a question or comment?
Yes, sir. Mr. President, just a comment. If you all were not notified of this, and even though it's zoning, this zoning may allow it, you still have to be notified because of the community. If it has already passed the planning committee, then the next step is that it comes before this body and zoning meeting, then you all could come and object to that before we vote. If it has not passed the planning committee, then my advice would be to get with Ms. Ainsworth on when that will go before the planning committee, because I believe it would still have to go before planning.
Well, no, I think because of the way it was zoned, anything could go there, from a church to a liquor store to a strip club to an apartment complex. Is there anyone here from planning or zoning who can help speak with Ms. Lee and the association members? Ms. Lee, if you don't mind connecting with Chris Gray back there, he will help to address both of the concerns.
And if I can add, I was told that it took two years to get to this point. Was that the two years of rezoning?
I don't think it was rezoned. I think because it was of the zoning that it already had, anything could go there.
Okay, but we weren't notified.
And that's the problem.
Question, Mr. President.
Yes, Mr. Stokes?
Thank you so much. Ms. Lee, y'all have fought for Northwest Hills for so many, many years. It's one of the premier neighborhoods in this city, and just when you're comfortable with your life, and you know what comes with those apartments, and you're trying to make sure that those issues don't happen, where they're going to be breaking into your houses, stealing your cars, and all that kind of stuff, you don't want that.
Correct.
Now, I don't know who represent, I don't know who represent you on the housing authority. Should be someone on the housing authority representing that ward. You need to make sure you talk to them, because from what I'm hearing, the housing authority has something to do with this.
Yes, they're working in partnership with this construction company. I spoke with Mrs. Cox at Jackson Housing Authority.
Who owns it? Who owns this complex? Who's going to own the complex?
I'm not sure who's going to own it. The name of it is Woodcrest. They already have a name for it. Woodcrest Apartment Complex. There are a lot of unanswered questions.
Now, is it going to be near the old St. Joseph? I'm trying to picture.
It's actually right, you're coming off Northside, you make that right by that gas station and get on 220. It's right there in that little green space.
It's right there in that little green space, right in our nose.
And nobody gave you any notice?
None. No notice.
Leaguer, is there a requirement, a Leaguer requirement, that notice must be given? Whereas our Leaguer department, they should, they should be able to help us, guide us where we are with this.
I mean, they've cleared the land, they got porta potties out there, they're getting ready to start building, I'm assuming, but they're just moving full steam ahead. But I know without a doubt, even though they're planning this, it could be stopped.
Well, what about site plan review? Oh, that's supposed to...
Well, they still got to go through site plan review.
But they didn't start construction from what she's saying.
No, they've just cleared the land, but what was really interesting to me is that this same company hunted me down for a development off Highway 80, but we heard nothing from them about this particular development here. And it was hard for me to get in contact with them. I know my clerk has had a couple of conversations with some folks, but getting somebody on the phone who really has intel is really hard to deal with. But in terms of the housing authority, the Ward 4 seat is still open.
So, Leaguer, can you give us some, some direction, some idea, somebody can give us?
We're going to be talking department.
Okay. Which department? Which department are you going to?
Planning Department.
Okay, now, what recommendation would you give to this neighborhood group? Would you go out and meet with them and kind of let them know?
Grab from the bottom, please. Thank you.
Drew Martin, City Attorney. I'd be glad to talk to them. Before talking to planning, I don't know what I could tell them. I can speak to the demolition house that you spoke to about. That's one that I believe is in my office right now, and she should be seeing action on that in the next few weeks.
Thank you. Thank you very much for that.
All right, Ms. Lee, thank you. Ms. Lee, thank you, but if you could follow up...
So going forward, okay, go ahead. I'm sorry.
No, go ahead.
Griselle, go ahead.
Go ahead.
Now, I was just saying, going forward, what should we do as an association, but you were about to tell me?
I think you're doing the right thing, but if you could just talk with Chris Gray over here on the side. Chris, raise your hand, please. Okay. And then follow up with me based on that conversation. Mr. Hartley?
Yes, Ms. Lee, just wanted to thank you for coming forward, and thanks for your neighborhood association as well. You know, anytime neighborhoods step up, I mean, you guys are doing the real work, holding our communities together. Anytime you will step up and say, hey, there's a concern, then that needs to be a priority. I'm not sure what happened here, and I guess we don't have anybody from planning right now that could address it, but we will get to the bottom of this. Number one, anyone that moves into the community needs to be, needs to be checking in with the neighborhood association, period, okay? And that's the way my vote generally goes, and that's the way my questions generally go, is do, have you checked with the neighborhood association? Do they have any concerns? Because that's critical, and I look forward to whatever response the administration can find on this. Thank you. Thank you so much.
Thank you all.
Thank you. All right, Ms. Hutton, Yolanda Hutton, Crime Deterrence Initiative, another one of my schoolmates.
It's 2000 Elementary.
Good morning.
Good morning.
Let me state your name for the record, please.
Great morning. My name is Yolanda Hutton. I'm to the mayor and council, Yolanda Hutton, a lifelong resident of Jackson and a resident and stakeholder in the Midtown community and a member of the Midtown Neighborhood Association. Today, I'm here to speak on behalf of the Midtown community, our support of the Crime Deterrence Initiative, and how our neighborhood is grateful for this initiative with law enforcement to combat crime within the city. Our goal in Midtown as a community has been to be well-informed, educate others in the process, and to try to find solutions to problems we see within our neighborhood. One thing we are very sure of is that Midtown is a gem within the city of Jackson. As stakeholders of Midtown, we love our neighborhood, and we are proud of the work that is happening within our community. So when the Crime Deterrence Initiative was brought to us, we were excited because this allowed us to assist law enforcement and protect our neighbors as we have always done to a higher level. The relationship Midtown has built with our commanders, our beat officers with JPD, Capitol Police, and Heinz County Sheriff Office are precious to us, and being a part of solution, not the problem, has always been our ultimate goal. We are grateful for Officer Sam Brown and Deputy Chief Griselle for coming to our neighborhood meetings every time we ask. They are part of our Midtown community. Our senior stakeholders within the neighborhood feel a bit safer with the ring doorbells, and we know that our officers, and they know that the officers who patrol our neighborhood are vested, and they look out for them. We have been, we have been to a fair share of meetings and town halls that have ended up with no solutions, just sitting and complaining about the problems. But we, as a neighborhood, a Midtown community, want to be part of the solution, and the Crime Deterrence Initiative has afforded the Midtown community to now be a part of the solution of combating crime. As a representative of the Midtown Neighborhood Association, we say thank you, and know that the Midtown community, the community of possibility, is vested in making Jackson safer. Just as we have coined our neighborhood the community of possibility, we want to coin Jackson as a city of possibility. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Hutton. And we have Monica Cannon Butler, CDBG. You're good? All right, thank you. Okay, colleagues, we're going to now move to the consent agenda. Mr. Stokes?
Thank you, and I apologize for running late, but we had a former deputy clerk for the city of Jackson who passed Ms. Gayle Green. Could we close the meeting here on? Also, Mr. Floyd Emmanuel McGee, referred to him as King Floyd Jr., Ms. Willie Lee Lally Gray, legendary gospel artist, Mr. JB Mans, and Chef BJ Norman. Thank you, sir.
Thank you. Clerk, consent agenda, please.
All matters listed under the consent agenda are considered to be routine by the city council and will be enacted by one motion in the form listed below. There will be no separate discussion of these items. If discussion is desired, that item will be removed from the consent agenda and considered separately.
So moved.
Second. It's been moving improperly. Second, because it's a consent agenda, if we need to discuss any items, we will need to pull them out. Okay? All in favor? Opposed? All right, six, zero. Thank you. Now we will move to introduction of the ordinance, number eight.
Ordinance of the City Council of Jackson, Mississippi for protecting the public safety of citizens, preventing unregulated camping on city property, including sidewalks, alley and streets, and providing for the removal of unauthorized campsites on public property.
Well, we don't need a motion or a second because this is an introduction. It will move over to the 17th agenda for adoption.
Mr. President?
Yes, Mr. Stokes?
Thank you so much. I think this is an ordinance, and I know the president of council is not here today, but I think this is an ordinance that... but I think this is an ordinance that citizens throughout this city has been concerned about. I think I saw the chief one day on television where they had these campgrounds, and people are noticing where, if it's a house abandoned, now they even going on the streets, I know in the wintertime now, but people are just disregarding, I guess, city property or anything else, and they just saying they're gonna do what they want to do where they want to. Something that we discussed before is that most of the people you see on these streets got checks. Now, family members or friends or somebody might have these checks, but I would hope that long term, we'll do like maybe Houston, where they have a place for people to go, but the checks got to come to the government to do these things. Because I don't want people to say that we'll prevent people from constitutional rights to, you know, assemble or express themselves without us having a solution. And I think the solution is follow the money.
Drew Martin, City Attorney, Councilman Stokes, that's a good point. So, this is step one. We've been working pretty closely with Council President Lindsay on this, but the things you're talking about need to come next. There's gotta be a place to put people, and you're right, Houston and some other cities have done similar, where they take a percentage of your income, whether it's a government-related income or something else, in exchange for shelters. And I think that's certainly one of the options that we need to look at. But we've got to find, as this gets implemented, and we figure out how, whether it's JPD or planning or code enforcement, whoever's gonna have primary responsibility, there's gotta be a place to put people, and certainly if people can make a contribution to that, you want them to.
Well, I know over the years, what the city has done, because we know a lot of the homeless.
That's right.
We have put them in hotels and paid for it, and I don't know which budget item it came out of, but we have put homeless in hotels and apartments. I know some departments on Bayler Avenue, and the city has paid, or the government or somebody has paid. So, we have tried to do something in the right direction to help homeless, but this problem is getting completely out of control, and more and more people coming to Jackson from everywhere for us to take care of, and I know Councilman Hartley said if you build something, they're gonna come, and they bombarding us, and we're not getting any state help.
Yeah, there's a, the legislature had put together a subcommittee on this, and some of us went to that recently, so similar to the one that you and Councilman Foote went to on the, I think you might have been there to this one as well.
I was there.
That's right. And, you know, one of our asks is we need some state help on this. We need, we need help funding things, and we're gonna need help from Capitol Police being able to enforce some of this, because right now Capitol Police won't enforce our ordinances, right? And so, the ordinance is only worth a piece of paper if we don't have enforcement capabilities. So, certainly JPD can, but we don't want this to become a mass incarceration situation either. We want to get people off the streets, and then we want to find humane shelters for them.
Thank you. Thank you, President.
Mr. Martin?
Yes.
I'm a bit of a nerd, and so sometimes I just read over the ordinances with my downtime. We've already had an ordinance on urban camping. How does this ordinance correlate with what was already there?
So, without going through all the old one, what we did with this, rather than try to revise the old one and fix it, so to speak, there's been some pretty active federal litigation over the last couple of years over this issue. This ordinance in particular is taken almost in whole cloth from one in Oregon that went to the United States Supreme Court, and the Supreme Court said this is a constitutional ordinance. The main changes that we made is that Oregon's, that Grants Pass, Oregon is the town, their ordinance referred to various Oregon state laws that Mississippi doesn't have, and so we went back and researched those laws, incorporated them into the ordinance to legislate it for the city. That's the answer. We wanted to make sure we had something that was legally defensible and that could be enforced.
Good deal.
Thank you.
Mr. Hartley?
Yes, and I guess this is more to the administration. It seems though, especially with the redistricting, Ward 5 now has probably about eighty percent of the homeless population in the city, and as we seek to move them out of public areas, I am hoping that we would have a plan where, an overall plan where we can manage this issue without, without West Jackson being the default. I think a plan should include, you know, just basically where are we gonna go in the next ten years with the homeless picture? What are we doing? Do we have, we used to have a homeless section in the city of Jackson. Now, we have one individual going around basically taking names. So, it's, I know this is a, it's a big issue in my ward. You know, it's a big issue for its blighted properties, squatting, and other things, and I'm hoping that the administration would at least, as we look at where they're going, would make sure that we have a good plan, a tight plan, that can not only help our, the homeless population themselves, but help the neighborhoods which they impact as well. Thank you.
All right, thank you. Any more questions or comments? All right, colleagues, we're gonna now move to claims.
Order approving claims appearing at pages 122, two inclusive thereon, a municipal docket of claims in the amount of $4,151,622.84 for making appropriation for the payment thereof.
All right. No move. Second, it's been moving improperly, second. Mr. Melanbecker, please review the four largest claims, please.
Good morning. Fidelis Melanbecker, CFO. The following are the four largest claims on this docket. They are as follows. First is Guarantee Restoration Services LLC in the amount of $586,490, paid out of fund 445, DFA Thalamarahole, and this is for repairs to the Thalamarahole building. Second is Entergy in the amount of $359,765.60, paid out of fund 1, General Fund. This is for streetlights. Third is Guarantee Restoration Services LLC in the amount of $346,490, paid out of fund 445, DFA Thalamarahole. This is for repairs to the Thalamarahole building. And the fourth is Metro Jackson Convention and Visitors Bureau in the amount of $293,536.72, paid out of fund 203, Jackson Convention. This is for the Visitors Bureau transfer of taxes November 2024.
All right, thank you. Colleagues, any questions? Mr. Stokes?
Thank you. Dr. U. Thalamarahole, do we have $2 million in the bank currently waiting to be spent on it? Because it has on the agenda DFA dash Thalamarahole, $2 million.
Yeah, so, Councilman Stokes, there is another appropriation from the last bill. I believe the documents are being executed. In fact, I was trying to follow up with Dr. Scott yesterday, and I did not see her, but the information was sent to the municipal clerk, and she forwarded that information to Human and Cultural Services. Mr. Mike Williams and Dr. Scott were completing the information. Then, finance would establish a bank account, because those appropriations do require a separate bank account, and so we have to get an update on where that process ends.
Could you keep us in the loop, because you have two items dealing with Thalamarahole, and, you know, like I said once, saying $2 million, the other one saying $932,000. Can we find out how much money we have? That way, the council wouldn't know as a whole how much we're dealing with. And finally, you have the library fund on here, $193,000. We talked before about the Mega House Library, what's gonna happen. Is the director still here? We keep hearing he may have resigned, but I haven't got a memo or anything. Can we get some memos so we can know what's going on by files?
Sure. I believe in, I mean, according to the news, and I believe I talked to the chairperson, who mentioned they were doing a national search. So, that was indication that he had departed. I don't know if Mr. Wright has gotten any updates. He typically meets with.
He's gone.
Or the mayor.
No, we have not had a meeting. We had a meeting scheduled with the Library Commission some time ago, and at this moment, I can't say why that was delayed, but at that time, that meeting was supposed to talk about new locations for some of our libraries, but we will see the next time we meet, the reason for his departure, and where they are in that search. To the best of their knowledge, here's reasons for departure. If I may, this deals with claims, and I've shared with the Vice President of the Council, we're requesting, if we're unable to do it for an emergency purpose, and I don't think we even have the information, to see if we can possibly do an emergency meeting, or a special meeting, I should say, a special meeting. Jackson State needs money for the SWAC championship, even though the game happened. Their anticipation was the council meeting that we delayed, that we would have been able to support them hosting the SWAC championship game. This is something that, in the years in which we've, they've been fortunate enough to host the SWAC championship, the city has always supported them in doing so, along with Visit Jackson. So, this request will be for $150,000 for the city of Jackson to provide to Jackson State, and seeing how they now have to go to Atlanta, Georgia, we don't want to be any type of inconvenience to the funding of their program and what they need.
Mr. President? Mr. Stokes?
I see Councilor Banks, Speaker, Speaker of Jackson State, they're debating it every day, but I just want to take a second, Mr. Mayor, to say that, thank you to the police department and everyone involved. It was a safe football season, but over the years, and I know people are wrong when they park in the middle of Woodrow Wilson, but you got everybody and their mama blocking these people from trying to get parking, and I thank the city for not towing people cars and not writing tickets, and I hope we'll start this year, starting now, trying to make sure that these surrounding businesses stop treating Jackson State football, and the people trying to come to the games like they're bad news, they're good for the city. And I've lived on Woodrow Wilson a long time. I was there when Mississippi State, Ole Miss, used to come to Jackson to the state, and all this stuff they doing to Jackson State was not done. So, I would hope that we'll find a win-win in that, and I will support $150,000 for the SWAC championship, because it was a good game. I just, we still didn't have brought more people, but it's a good event for Jackson. Thank you.
That's what they do. Mr. Stokes, I mean, Mr. Banks? Yeah, thank you, Mr. Griselle. To that note about Southern bringing more people, and hopefully next time, all corner win, and we'll have a bigger crowd. Nevertheless, my question is, have we identified where we would get this from? Are we looking at fund balance?
Yeah, so, it would be fund balance, but there was also another idea I needed to explore, not talked to the mayor yet.
Let me ask a question, because I know everything in. Mr. Banks, if I may, that item is not currently, well, if, it's claims, there was discussion about claims, so if I'm gonna make a motion, I'm just asking before I get ready to make a motion to add it to claims, because claims is on, and this is a preclaim item. But my understanding is they don't even have the item really ready.
He can make a, he can make a motion.
Make a motion to add if we find out where it's coming from. All right. What I was gonna suggest is, and this will be between you and Hartley, what I was gonna suggest is, what are your thoughts about Grand Golf, since it's for Jackson State? You said the amount was 150?
Yes.
If there's 150 available, instead of the risk of fund balance, what if we did Grand Golf? Because if I'm correct, they got bills and stuff due already as far as police and security from the SWAC championship.
My request would be to hear from Fidelis, just to see what his thinking was, because he's.
Let me just add one thing, not about the funding source, but I don't think we should add it to claims docket without some sort of order, say, what it is and what we're doing.
Okay. Okay. Thank you, Mr. Martin.
Which we'll have quickly, but we don't have it today.
Colleagues, if you don't mind, I'm gonna go ahead and call for the vote on claims. Yes, Mr. Hartley, Mr., I'm sorry. That's a twin again. Mr. Foote?
Thank you, Mr. Chair, I appreciate it. I've got issues with two items that I wanted to visit about, because I don't, I think it's a problem. And this has to do with the contract we signed with Mr. Ahmad Al Turk, Wayback Al Turk Planning LLC, I believe it is, way back at the end of July, for $700,000. And, see, that was the way it was presented, $700,000, and it was gonna be paid monthly at $58,310, I believe it is. Now, one of the things that I didn't appreciate until just recently, reading on this, there's a provision at the back of the contract that says, if there are things that aren't covering this contract that he works on, there's up to $52,000 to be available for that. So, the invoices so far, the first invoice came in at the end of September, was $58,310. The invoice came in at $69,510. The two that are on this, on this claims docket are for $80,810 and $85,880. So, far in excess of what my expectation was of $58,000, which I thought was a very lucrative deal for Al Turk LLC, or Planning LLC, to begin with. And so, you add up the differentials between, in other words, there's these supplements, there's additional money in the invoices that have to do with the supplemental $52,000. So, four months in, we've already had supplements of $61,270, which is beyond the $52,000. So, we're already in excess of that, and I think we should take these two items, I move that we take these two items off the claims docket till we can get further understanding of what this is all about.
Second.
Okay, there's a motion and a second to remove the two items.
Since there's a motion and a second, and there's discussion, can I, can we let the CFO?
I have a call for discussion, yeah, Mr. Mayor. Give me a minute. I'm trying to process this stuff. Hey, oh, give me one second. Mr. Melanbecker?
Yeah, so, one thing I would like to share, if you recall, a few weeks ago, maybe about a month ago, there was another order that came before you to amend the contract, and this is for the work related to Thalamarahole. So, part of what you see is billing for that, right? It's separate from that initial contract that was signed, or that was approved, rather.
Mr. Mayor?
Yes, in addition to that, I think it is noteworthy that Mr. Al Turk, since we're evaluating the contract, has created savings sufficiently enough to pay for the work that he's doing on Thalamarahole. So, he's actually created savings within his oversight over contracts, making the contractors come in below what their initial estimates were. He's doing this, since we're talking, through looking at schedules of the work to be performed, so that we don't get into contracts that are for a certain amount, and then once they're scheduled to be performed, we then do change orders, which the question should be, what did you perform under the benchmarks that he was setting and ensuring that we're meeting? So, we've actually learned a few tricks of the trade under his work and support of the oversight over these contracts.
Okay, Mr. Banks? Yeah, so, just to be clear, we voted on one item, that there were somewhat of a conglomerate of things, and some public work stuff, all that kind of stuff, and then the other was more specific to a Thalamarahole. To keep there from being confusion in the body, is there a way that this could be notated when it comes before us on claims, so that way we'll know? Because right now, it just looked like it all. Because right now, it just looked like it all, from what I see, is just one notation over here. And I, I think that might ease some of the confusion.
And, and that's one thing that, in fact, the last time, so we've already made, we've made at least one payment for part of that work, and I did request that we need to make sure that it, it is segregated, right? So because, so Thal, Thal Yamarah whole project is paid through Human and Cultural Services. The, the other services are paid through Public Works. So the engineering augmentation, that is paid through Public Works. Thal Yamarah should be paid out of Human and Cultural Services.
So is, 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 is that reflected correctly? It is reflected correctly? Mr. President, while they, Mr. President, while they're talking, if it would bring more readiness to my colleague, if whatever recommendation needed to be added, as far as separating it to make a motion so that claims would pass, if, if it is the means to do so, to help bring readiness, then, you know, I think we can do that.
Mr. Martin, City Attorney, I just had one, one comment. I don't have the exact number, because I don't have the order in front of me, but the order that Mr. Melibek was referring to, that came before the body about a month ago, increased that fifty-two thousand number to approximately one hundred and fifty thousand. So we are within, the, the billings are within the budgeted amounts for Mr. Al Turk, for his extra services so far. It exceeds the original amount, but it's within the amended amount.
Okay.
Mr. President?
Mr. Stokes?
Thank you. Mr. President, I think Councilman Banks is trying to create an avenue where claims can get picked, claims will get passed. I think right now, with this item being so touching, claims is not gonna pass. And I think we have a motion on the floor-
Correct.
-that's been second, you know, that, you know, I, I think a lot of people just leery about money in Jackson right now. So they want to make sure that the right thing is done. So I think that if we can listen to what Councilman Banks saying in terms of removing this off the, I think that's what he's saying. I don't want to put words in his mouth. Let's move this item off, and let's deal with it separately.
Mr. Melibek?
Yes, and, and we can make the actual notation, right, to our claims, so that it's very clear if there's any confusion.
Ms. Coy?
Uh, yes, I would just wanted to say, if we voted a month ago to increase it to one fifty, then we are within the range of the amount over the fifty-two, that it doesn't matter.
Yes, and also the contract is not to, yeah, the contract is not to exceed, and so I think, as Mr. Martin said, you know, for instance, if, even if you paid it in five months, then you would actually stop, because at that point, you would be at that threshold. So the contract was not to, you know, exceed for the one-year period.
Thank you. Mr. Banks? Yeah, and, and again, just sort of what we feel, I'm just trying to make sure that there's readiness, so that can, claims can pass. And so if, if we need an amendment to clarify, because it was a conglomerate of different things from Public Works all the way across to Human and Cultural Services, that, that they're doing, and so if there needs to be some type of notation, I think Mr. Melibek already said, that in the future, that notation will be there, so it won't be in confusion. So if for readiness, that needs to happen, then let's go forward that, so that claims can pass. That's, that's what I'm saying.
Well, colleagues, we have a motion and a second on the floor, and it's gotta be properly disposed of. And so unless those two colleagues are not gonna remove that, that motion and the second, we need to go ahead and dispose of it. All right, all in favor of the motion to remove those two items from the agenda? All opposed? Three, two-
You abstain.
You abstain, and one abstention.
It passes for a lack of a majority of the council members present.
It has to have four, because it's six present.
I said it fails, right?
It fails.
Oh, I meant to say it fails. Everything else was right, except for that first line, so I forgive me, it fails.
So that's, that's, that was, excuse me, Mr. President, Vice President, that was three, two, one?
One, one abstention.
And one abstention, and it, so-
It fails.
You gotta have four.
Because you gotta have a majority of members present.
You gotta have four.
Mr. President?
Yes?
Uh, Mr. President, again, you have the whole claims now at stake. Now, if that fails on three, two, one, if Mr. Foot voted against his claim, it's not gonna pass. So somewhere down the line, I still say we should at least listen to what Banks was saying, to try to create a win-win, but I'm ready to vote, anytime everybody else is ready to vote, I'm ready to vote everything.
Me too, and I just wanna reiterate that it is the council's job to pay the city's bills.
Let's vote.
That's a major part of what we're here for. Mr. Banks, and then-
Yeah, just for clarity, a part of Mr. Turk's work does have to do with Thal Yamarah, correct?
That's correct.
Can, can we just speak to this? Because I just wanna make, I don't think we need any delays. So if you could briefly just kind of speak to the work that this invoice is specifically for?
And owe you to Mr. Wright, as he has been working, working directly with Mr. Al Turk.
Louis Wright, CAO. Mr. Al Turk is working with Thal Yamarah, which is outside of his Public Works responsibilities. He is working with, making sure, as the mayor mentioned, those contracts that we are receiving are, have the proper schedules on them. He's even looking at how much those contractors are charging the city, and has also done some things in talking with those contractors to reduce those costs down. You know, when we first started with Thal Yamarah, we had one contractor said that they were gonna come in and do some work there. Mr. Mr. Ahmad indicated that we needed to get more people involved, so we put together scope of work to be done, and as a result, this original contractor came in higher than some of the others. So that's the one that we're going with. As the mayor mentioned, he is helping us to reduce the cost of what we're doing at Thal Yamarah. So his work there is very valuable, and, you know, I would encourage you to proceed with voting on this particular item.
If, if I may-
Mr. Mayor?
I'm sorry, I don't-
Go ahead, Mr. Hartley, go ahead.
This is the Thal Yamarah piece. We have a January date that we're on target for, for reopening Thal Yamarah Hall. There are scheduled events that are, are scheduled to take place. We've been meeting the benchmarks, the remediation in the lobby, in the theater, in the office. He's been ensuring that all of these things are meeting their deadline, the installation of the chillers, the cleaning of the pre-existing chillers. I, I've talked about this at a prior Monday morning press, Monday afternoon press briefing, where I gave the percentage of the work that had been completed. So we are putting in jeopardy, if we don't support his work, we are putting in jeopardy the schedule of that amongst other, various other projects in Public Works.
Yes, Mr. Hartley. My, my comment, basically, it's, you know, I have nothing against Mr. Al Turk, Mr. or Thal Yamarah, or anything like that. My comment was because I, to have that issue with, okay, are we exceeding, you know, this, this cost here? And if the proper documentation is not in, in the folder when we review it, then it's just like first blush, like Councilman Foot said, it looks as though our monetary issues weren't all, you know, in, in, in order. And that's especially concerning when I look through more agenda items, and I see invoices back from 2022. And so, yes, I think we need to take a harder look at everything coming forward for these claims, and for where our money is going. Again, I applaud the efforts that, that we're doing with Thal Yamarah Hall and, and engineer. I would like to see it to be more concise, though, or at least explain in detail how he is moving over from one project to another, okay? But my primary interest was, in fact, that we have our, our money in order, and the paperwork to support it in order. So that's, that's where my concern has been.
Okay, thank you. Colleagues, it will, Mr. Mr. Martin, maybe you could reiterate your point that we're still within-
Sure, I'd be happy to. Drew Martin, City Attorney, that, so the contract, and Mr. Foot described it properly in the first place, is a, there's a base amount for various services that are detailed in the contract. Then there are additional services that we pay extra for as we go along, and, oh, and here it is, Ms. Monkier just found the order, so, so on, well, I don't see the date yet, but on November 5th, there we go. On November 5th, what was brought before the council was an order that would increase the additional services budget by a hundred and twenty thousand dollars, to be a total not to exceed a hundred and seventy-two thousand dollars. So we're within that, that total, and that was approved and passed by the council. I will say just one, one other, just side note, I mean, I've been in a lot of these meetings, for Thal Yamarah at least, where Mr. Turk is there, and my opinion is, his work has been indispensable in terms of coordinating the various people. You've got architects, you've got remediation specialists, you've got people working on the roof, you've got people working on the air, and I'm not sure that we'd be on schedule but for him, making sure that he knows where all those things fit together.
One last-
Mr. Mayor?
-point on that, and, and to be clear, for those that are unfamiliar with this work, the amounts of money may seem exorbitant to them, but this money doesn't go exclusively to Mr. Al Turk. He works with the group, and he has colleagues that he pays within this work as well.
Thank you. Mr. Hartley?
Yeah, just one thing, Mr. Melibek, if you would, make sure that any relevant documents, like supportive supplemental information, is included with the amendment itself.
Sure, we will.
Because again, as these questions start coming up, and again, I, you know, I applaud the work that's being done. But my thing is, our finances, again, we gotta get, get back to making sure everything's tight there. And so I think the people are just depending on us to do that with their taxpayers' money. Thank you, Mr. President.
Mr. Banks? Yeah, Mr. President, I move that we amend claims in the notation mark under these Al Turk items for both of them, that fifty-eight thousand is applied according to, and if you can get the proper information, but the order dealing with Public Works, and exactly one hundred and eight thousand, six hundred and ninety is applied toward Thal Yamarah Hall. Is, is that correct? That's my motion, Mr. President, so we can get passage.
We have a motion, is there a second?
Second.
Okay, we have a motion and a second. Any questions? We're gonna call for the vote for the amendment. All in favor? All opposed? Fails?
Abstain is still gonna fail.
Fails. All right, well, I'm gonna go ahead and call for the, the vote to pay the city's bills, colleagues. All in favor of claims? All opposed? All right, claims fail.
Order approving gross payroll, including payroll deduction claims number three, one, zero, one, nine, two, and making appropriation for the payment thereof.
Show move. Second. All right, it's been moved and properly second. Any questions or comments? All in favor? Thank you, sir. The clerk didn't tell me. All right, we're gonna move on, colleagues, to item number eleven. Clerk?
Order authorizing the retention of Ice Miller, LLP attorney, to assist with water, sewer compliance and transition.
Show move. Second, it's been moved and properly second. Any questions or comments?
Question? When we say assist with water, sewer, compliance and transition, what all that entails?
He's, Michael Stroud, by the way, is on the call here, and Mr. Stroud is the attorney that would be working directly with the city on these issues, and, and he's willing to address any of this as well. But what I will tell you is, the city is currently in negotiations with the EPA and the Department of Justice over the consent decrees and stipulated orders that govern the water and sewer, and those negotiations include trying to look at what the transition away from the interim third-party administrator will look like. So, so he'll be participating in all of our meetings with the government, assisting us in drafting and, and suggestions for how to draft those orders to better suit the city, and especially helping advise, as we look at how to transition this back away from the third-party administrator.
Okay. I want to make sure that, clear with this.
Yes, sir.
Now, you have a legislature that's already making some decisions that seem to remove water and sewer from the city. Now, it seems as though we're using this company to do exactly what you're saying, that any legislation that comes through, they're gonna be involved. Are we in for another big fight that we can't win?
I don't think, well, I think, I think we're already in a big fight, but I don't think it's one we can't win. So Mr. Stroud and Ice Miller are the federal lobbyists that the city has been using, they're very familiar with the circumstances that we have. Certainly, the state legislature has expressed an interest in deciding how these things look, but we think Mr. Stroud is one of the people that can help us navigate through that.
Mr. Foot? Thank you, Mr. Chair. The issue I have is that I think we're still two or three or four years away from this point in time, and I'd just as soon not spend dollars on high-powered attorneys in Washington to follow this, you know, narrative. It's already, it's not, it's beyond us as to what happens. And so the state legislature, who knows what's gonna happen this session, or the next session, or the following session? And so I, I'd just as soon save our legal dollars for, for the legal department or other, other areas.
But before I respond, I see the mayor wanted to-
Mr. Mayor?
Yes, it got louder. The EPA and the DOJ would disagree with you. They are the ones that approached the City of Jackson to negotiate this transition. They are the ones that have put us on a timeline, saying that we need to escalate this process. And so that, that is what our timeline is shaped by, is our discussions with the EPA and the DOJ. Our city attorney can attest to that.
Yeah, and what I'll add to that is, I think these orders are going to be amended, not, not in three or four years, but next year, and probably early next year. And, and we need to be as active and proactive as we can be in that process right now, because we're stuck with those orders once they're entered. The city is a party to this, the government, the federal government's a party to this, nobody else is. Well, I take that back, I'm sorry, we have intervenors now that represent various citizen groups throughout the city, who are also part of the litigation as well. And I will add this as well, I mentioned this to the council once before, but there is money, we can't access it yet, but there is money that Jackson Water is required to contribute towards these expenses, starting later in 2025, and we plan on tapping into that. This contract with Mr. Stroud and with Ice Miller is a short-term contract, at least a start. It has a not-to-exceed amount of forty-five thousand dollars, so that we don't go out and spend reckless amounts of money for services that aren't helpful. We think it will be helpful, by the way, but I wanted you to know that's in there to protect us and allow us to get out of it if it's not helping us. But, but I want this help, I can tell you that, I think the city needs this help, and this is something that if we don't, if we don't take an active role in it, the government and the court will take that role away from us, is my concern.
All right, anything else? All right, colleagues, I'm gonna go ahead and call for the vote, all in favor? Opposed? All right, it fails.
Mr. President?
Yes, sir.
I trust everything that leader's saying, but someone's got to be involved on the front end. You can't come to the council meeting and then start telling us this is what everybody's saying. I haven't heard any of this. You know, send me a memo, talk to him or something, and I just can't vote for something that I do not have any knowledge about.
Mr. Banks?
Thank you.
Yeah, Mr. Was-
Yeah, Mr. President, we don't have to do enough, but at some point, I would want to ask if we could do a motion to reconsider because this is a confidential client, attorney privileged client about this. And I think that what needs to be explained is one of the, some of the real reasons why and communications between other federally elected officials and why we need to take this step because I don't think that's clear. And I think that needs to be made abundantly clear because then we, because we are actually, and Michael Stroud can speak to this, but I think we gotta do it in this exact session, working against one of the main supporters of what I think we all want to see happen in Jackson. But I think that it needs to be made more clear legally so that colleagues can get rid of the unreadiness.
Okay, thank you. Number 12, clerk?
Order authorizing an appropriation in the amount of $443,383 to Jackson Redevelopment Authority.
So move.
Second.
All right, we have a motion in the property, and it's been properly, second. Any questions or comments?
Question?
Yes, sir.
The almost a half a million dollars, it's gonna be used to do what? I see something under the who has the 1, 2, 3, 4, who has, but specifically, what's the plan?
So Councilman Stokes, this is actually money that's already in the budget. During the budget meetings this summer, JRA had made the request if they could receive the funds that are appropriated to them in one form of appropriation as opposed to how we've had it budgeted by categories. And what usually happens is, you know, JRA will pay certain bills and send that to the city for reimbursement. And so what they've requested is if they could just receive those funds in a form of, you know, one large appropriation. And so what this represents is essentially operating expenses excluding what would be payroll. We're still working with them to determine how that needs to be transitioned. Then the other amount that we are going to leave, keep on the city books, would be the debt service because we do cover the bond payment. Then there's another $200,000, which has to be a repayment to JRA for a loan the city obtained years ago. That will be invoiced separately. But this amount here just represents what is purely operating cost. You know, some of the legal fees, utility bills that they pay, materials and supplies.
Okay, you have two special legal services.
Yes. Yes, so the way, if you look at the actual budget, it's broken up in different segments. You have like Union Station, you have like Ferris Street, you have a small amount, Highway 80, and then you have JRA. What that order is doing is actually capturing all those amounts that are in the budget.
What's the professional services?
So they do engage different vendors. For instance, some folks that work on what would be the HVAC, right? That is someone that would fall under professional services that JRA typically pays. And then, you know, they send that invoice to the city, and the city sends money to them. And there are times where there have been some confusions, and I'll speak to HVAC, whether, you know...
I trust what you're saying, Doc, and I support it. But they need to come and speak for themselves. And I think that's what the president said at the last council meeting when we talked about the fire department. They're here. You're speaking, but the question's still not being answered. Why so much money going to legal services and to whom? Whenever you see in government other professional services, that's normal sweetheart deal. So, you know, that's my concern.
Thank you. Mr. Foot?
I was gonna make a reiterate point that Mr. Stokes is making. I've got four different special legal services and amounts to 40% or $179,000. And that begs, for me, a question of who are the attorneys and what specifically are they doing that much work for, for JRA? I know JRA's been in trouble in the past, but I hope they're not in trouble right now. But that's a lot of money to spend just on legal services, a huge part of that, 40% of the whole amount.
Mr. Mayor?
I don't think that the legal services reflect quote-unquote "trouble." It reflects a portion of the work that they do. I do believe, I do agree with the notion that they would be best suited to speak on their own behalf. I think they spoke during budget season. So this isn't anything outside of the ordinary practice of the city. The money that is being requested isn't anything beyond what we've allocated once they gave their budget presentation. The only difference that is occurring here is instead of it being piecemealed throughout the budget cycle to them, they're saying that it's more efficient for their work that they get it all at one time. That's the only difference that's happening here. I think that the questions as to the allotment or the cost within their budget are all relevant questions. I think that the time to ask those questions would have been at the time that we approved their budget or disapproved their budget. The question that is before us is whether we want to give it all to them at one time. I will attempt to reach Mr. Pike and see if he can join. I don't know if it's more of the appetite of the body to hold this item and to see if I can get Mr. Pike to speak to it.
I know we have a motion and a second. Who made the motion? Okay.
Okay, well, okay. We call for the vote.
I'll call for the vote, that's no problem. All in favor? All opposed? Three. It's 3-2, passes. All right, thank you. Mr. President?
Yes, sir. I move that motion to reconsider claims.
All in favor of reconsidering claims? All in favor? No?
Oh, I'm sorry, I'm sorry, there was no second.
I'm sorry, can I get a second? All right, it's been moved in properly, second. All in favor of reconsidering claims? Reconsidering. Opposed? All right, passes. Reclaims, please. All right. Go ahead, go ahead, get counsel.
Order approving claims appearing at pages 122 to inclusive their own on municipal docket of claims in the amount of $4,151,622.84 for making appropriation for the payment thereof.
So move. Second, it's been moved in properly, second. Any questions?
Thank you, yes. Doc, you mentioned something earlier under claims about lights. You mentioned something earlier under claims about lights.
About lights?
Lights.
Yes, part of the, it was on the larger claims?
Yes.
Yes.
Can you espouse, can you espouse on that?
Oh, for the streetlights?
Yes.
Yeah, $359,765.60. This is the bill we paid to Entergy for our streetlights.
My concern is what we keep speaking about over and over in every meeting, that the city is mighty dark. Citywide. We paying for streetlights, but the service is poor. Certain areas, because it's so dark, we have high crime. Can we not negotiate or something where we can get better lighting, reduce the bill, or do something?
So Councilman Stokes, I know the presidency of Entergy Mississippi has actually come to meet with the administration, and Mr. Wright has had some conversations with them and shared some of the sentiments, you know, from this body. So I'm not sure if the mayor wanted to speak to it or...
No, we understand what the question is about, so I will just proceed forward. I don't want to hold up the meeting with the exercise.
Well, we've heard everyone say they keep meeting with them and they keep talking, but the lighting is not improving. But we continue to pay every month, every other month. So do we stop paying? How do we get someone to pay attention to us that the city is too dark and we need to have better lighting?
Yeah, so, and I'll say this, Councilman Stokes, I think those conversations have to happen. If we say don't pay them, you know, it's gonna be completely dark, right? Because they'll cut off the power. So I would not recommend that we don't pay. But I know, you know, there have been meetings. You know, the mayor has met with them. Mr. Wright has been meeting with them as well. So I think that's where the solution would be in those discussions.
Thank you. Mr. Banks?
I'm sorry. Yeah, I'm, Mr. President, I'm gonna ask if the document with the correction according to the concern of Councilman Foot that was first brought up on claims, if that could be provided and amended, and then we reconsider claims at a later time so that we can pay our bills. But at this point, I withdraw my motion.
Okay. Councilwoman Clay, are you gonna withdraw your second? It was me, oh, sorry, I withdraw my second. All right, that's that. Number 13, clerk?
Order approving the municipal depository bid notice for the city of Jackson for 2025 through 2028.
So move. Second. All right, it's been moved in properly, second. Any questions or comments? Mr. Hartley?
Yeah, actually, this was concerning the last item, but we dissolved it. But Mr. Mellonbecker, is it possible we can get Entergy here in front of council for our next meeting? Okay, because there's a lot of questions we need to ask Energy for its accountability, for its double stacking our poles, for its bent poles, for its no lighting. There's a whole host of things, and we need to get them.
Mr. Wright, I think that that's available. Shaniqui, if you want to reach out to him. I don't want to take responsibility for their engagement with the council.
Please, thank you.
Mr. Banks?
Yeah, just, is this, we had a depository item that came before us some months ago. Is this the same one, but it's just going back out that never kind of went forth? Is this that same one? Okay, that's all I needed to know.
Yeah, we discussed this yesterday at work session. I think this is just to allow them to put it back out. All right, all right, all right.
Yeah, I would like to clarify that. It's not in the exact same form, but it is the depository agreement that we need to enter into. So we're having PFM help us with the shaping of that so that we make sure we maximize the benefits to the city with our depository.
Okay. Mr. Foot?
The, I just want to say, this is a really great opportunity for the city to make some extra money if we in fact have an average balance that was told to us yesterday of $90 million in all our different accounts, and that money's invested. Let's assume we get 4%, which is, you know, was impossible four years ago, but certainly possible now. That would be over $3 million in interest over the course of a year. So it's really significant that we go forward with this and make sure we get competitive bids.
Any more questions or comments? All in favor? Opposed?
Epstein.
Thank you. Number 14, clerk?
Order authorizing the mayor to renew the contract with MetLife to provide group and life accidental death and dismemberment insurance coverage to active and retired city employees participating in the self-funded health plan for the period January 1st, 2025 through December 31st, 2025.
So move, second. It's been moved in properly, second. Any questions or comments?
A question?
Yes, sir.
Mr. Martin, I know how important... I know how important this is to make sure they have health coverage. But they also talk about money. You know, retired police officers, ones who still work. Are we paying them? How do we, I know you're looking like, yeah, we paying them or they volunteering, but how do we increase their pay because they feel like they barely making it? Do we have a study already done?
Toya Martin, HR Director. Which, the police officers?
Not the officers directly, the...
The reserved officers?
Yes.
Yeah, they don't receive any pay. They're, it is volunteer because they have to keep up with their certification. I mean, police can probably talk more about that, but they don't receive any pay.
Is it illegal to give them some? Maybe not the same as other officers, but some kind of, some kind of pay.
I'll have to research that, Councilman Stokes, and provide notification about that. But as far as, as long as I've been here, the reserved officers have never received any pay from the city of Jackson. So they don't have access to health insurance or the city clinic or anything like that.
I know that, and I know things change. College football players getting paid now. So things change. They need some money. Every time I see them, I'm not saying you got to give them full of bank, but we need to make some consideration for some compensation for them.
I understand.
And I hope that the city will lead the way in trying to make the recommendation and then let's see if we can get some satisfaction. If you're driving, you're using your car, you dish, you dare, but there's no compensation whatsoever, that's just not right. Thank you.
We'll take a look at that with the, I'll take a look at that with the police department and get back with you.
All right, any more questions or comments? All in favor? All right. Any more questions or comments? All in favor? Unanimous? All right, thank you. Number 15, clerk?
Order ratifying and approving payment of invoices submitted by Animal Medical Center for goods and services received by the Jackson Police Department.
So move. Second, it's been, I'm sorry. Second goes to Ms. Clay.
Okay, use your mic, Ms. Clay. It's been moved improperly. Second. Any questions or comments? All in favor? Sorry, unanimous? Number 16?
Order ratifying and approving payment of invoices for goods and services received by the Jackson Police Department from the Halls Toy Service, Inc.
So move. Second. It's been moved improperly. Second. Any questions or comments? Mr. Stokes, these are old. If I remember looking, these are some of these old claim we trying to clear. Right, Captain?
Captain Michael Allen, Jackson Police Department. Yes, these are old bills.
Thank you. Mr. Hartley?
Yeah, and perhaps Mr. Mellon Becker could help with this as well concerning these invoices. I looked over, just looking at them, 22, 23, and I think they were all to Halls, you know. Can you tell me what happened there? Why are we pulling out two-year-old invoices that hadn't been paid?
They just submitted them to the police department. I can't tell you why they submitted them late, but they usually drop them off at the impound lot. But somehow or another they weren't and they forwarded them over to us. And we got what legal to try to get them paid.
Okay, Mr. Mellon Becker, if you would. And I understand, but two years late is very late. What are we doing to fix this? Again, you know, I'm looking for some kind of encouragement to help me to, you know, embrace everything, force financing claims and everything, and then I see something like this.
Yeah.
So what are we doing here?
So, again, you know, this has been longstanding conversation about how invoices get to the city and we shared how they would go to different divisions. How we've addressed that is we've now centralized the receipt of invoices through our virtues, vendor self-service, right? So all vendors that do business with the city, in fact, any new vendor has to go through that system. Existing vendors were given through this month to sign up. And this is how they're able to submit invoices to the city, right? And we have a central repository where we can see. So if you ask me, is an invoice outstanding, I can look into the system as opposed to trying to go around the city, different divisions.
And you know that, I know that, right?
Correct.
Okay, I was working with your team on this, okay?
Yes.
My question though is, these, this is something that came underneath the wire here. So do we have other ones out there like that where vendors, old vendors say, well, hey, I got a packet over here of, I think I'm gonna take it down to the City of Jackson after a couple of years. Do we have, do we, do we not, did we not have a close loop that we knew that we owe these folks? Or is there anybody else out there that we owe?
Yeah. So, and I can share, there are some invoices that have come through, right? They're going through legal sufficiency. So, you know, some bills that don't, you know, immediately get paid, go through the legal department, they're doing all this sufficiency, there's a lot of questioning that's happening. And once that's resolved, that's when they make it to the docket.
And I understand. Just if you would, just if there was any way to reach out to vendors perhaps we did business with and perhaps they have an old invoice. I know it's on them to submit it, but this is not a very good look.
Yeah, no, and we have, right? We've sent out communication to all the vendors that are in our system, right? So they should have received communication. And the whole thing is that updating addresses, right? Because we've had returned mail and that's why it's important to use that vendor self-service because they have to update their records.
Thank you, Mr. Mellon.
Ms. Clay?
Yes. Is there not a way legally that we can put a deadline on when they can submit something? And if they pass that date, then we don't have to honor it?
Yeah, so part of, in terms of signing up for vendor self-service, right, we've given them deadlines on when they have to sign up. But with respect to, you know, outstanding invoices, and the issue we saw was, you know, they claimed they had sent them to the city, but we were so decentralized that they would go to, you know, different divisions. So that part we've resolved. Then there's another question of the statute of limitation that comes into play and the legal department actually has to do that sufficiency. Excuse me.
So is there not a statute of limitations on it?
Well, there is in terms of to pay, to pay those bills.
Even to submit?
Well, to submit, the statute essentially requires that we pay them within 45 days after they submit.
I understand. I'm asking, is there a timeline, a deadline? After X number of dates, these bills are from 2020. Say if you got a bill past 2020, you cannot submit it if you don't submit it by this date. I'm willing to give them a grace period of saying, hey, 90 days, and if they're not all submitted by that time, then we are void.
Mr. Martin?
Drew Martin, City Attorney. Councilman Clay, what I would say is there is a statute of limitations on these. That's three years. We don't approve a payment that's beyond outside of that limitations period. Good practice is for them to submit it sooner. But if we've let it sit around and it gets past three years, there's case law and attorney general opinions to say we, the city can't pay at that point. So we don't, and so if you look at this order, the very bottom of the first page has a bold face that has not recommended for payment. Those are the, there's about 16 of them there that are all 2020 dates. In 2021, those are all outside of the statute of limitations and we've recommended do not pay those.
So three years?
Yes, ma'am.
Three years is the limit.
That's right.
We need to send out an email saying if you got any bills past three years, we will not honor them because of the statute of limitations and be done with it.
Mr. Hartley?
Yes, Mr. Mellon Becker, back to your process on invoices. Is it mandatory or just required that any individual that does work for the city have to go online and do, and register? So there's no way out? No, in the future, no one will be providing work and then coming back later and we not know about it?
Right, right.
Real good.
Yeah, we've enforced that, yes.
Excellent, thank you.
Mr. President?
Yes, sir, Mr. Stokes?
President, I want to withdraw my motion. I share the concerns that some of my colleagues have. I do understand what Doc is saying in terms of the company saying that they have turned them in and that it just didn't get to the right people. I understand that and that's why I was giving some leeway, but I do not want to be on record as voting or possibly vote for something that is illegal or possibly illegal. So I withdraw my motion. Thank you.
Counselman, if I could, just in case, Drew Martin, City Attorney. What the order provides for, those first 16 that I mentioned that we recommended not paying would not be paid if we pass this order. The following 16 that are under the section of whereas invoices for which payment is being recommended are identified below recommended for payment, passing this order would allow those 16 to be paid and would not pay the previous 16 that are untimely.
Thank you.
Yes, sir.
All right, Mr. Stokes has withdrawn his motion. Who made, who made the first motion?
Councilman Stokes made the motion second by Councilman Hartley.
I withdraw my motion.
I'm moving to pay him, Mr. Stokes. Okay.
All right. All right. So if his motion stays, his second stays, okay?
Yeah.
All right, all in favor? Oppose? All right, what's the count? Five, one. All right, thank you. Number 15, please.
17. 17.
Okay, number 17, please, clerk.
Order approving payment of $300 for Jackson Police Department's membership in the regional organized crime information center.
So move. Okay, let's be moved improperly. Second. Any questions or comments? All in favor? All right, six, seven. All right, thank you. 18?
Order accepting bid of Canon Chevrolet Nissan for the 12-month contract of 2024-2025. Jackson Fire Department SUVs, pickup vehicles to be used by the City of Jackson. Fire Department bid number 07000-110524.
So move.
Second.
It's been moved improperly. Second. Any questions or comments? All in favor? Six, zero. All right, passes. 19?
Order authorizing the contribution of matching funds to Stupac Community Services to support social and community service programs and authorize the mayor to execute a memorandum of understanding with Stupac Community Service, Inc.
So move.
Second.
Second.
All right, we had a move motion and it's been properly. Second. Any questions or comments?
Yes.
Stokes?
Thank you, Mr. President. Is Ms. Scott, I was waiting for you. Ms. Scott? Ms. Scott?
Good morning, Dr. Scott, Director of Human Cultural Services.
Good morning, Dr. Scott. Can you kind of explain to us what we do with this item, please?
The City of Jackson Department of Human and Cultural Services provides non-compete grant funding to Stupac as part of their annual operating budget. They use this money for paying staff, for security, utilities, care, maintenance, just everyday operations.
How much do we normally give them, Dr. Scott?
$35,000.
Thank you. All right, any more questions or comments? Going to call for the vote. All in favor? Six, zero. All right, passes. Thank you. Number 20. 23. What happened to 20?
Yeah, I read it.
22 was pooled.
Okay, so we moved to 23.
Yes.
All right.
Order authorizing the Department of Public Works to pay professional association dues, conference fees, and travel-related expenses associated with representing the City of Jackson and its employees as is reasonable and necessary to the performance of the duties of the Department of Public Works.
So move.
Second.
All right, it's been moved improperly. Second. Any questions or comments? Mr. Foot?
Is there a dollar amount on this?
A thousand.
Just $1,000. Okay, thank you.
$1,000. Mr. Hartley?
Yes, and I guess this to the administration, how are we doing on public works director? I know, you know, we got Mr. Alterich. He's working overtime and doing different things to help the city. But I really believe we need someone in that position that can oversee the day-to-day maintenance of the city and the personnel in the, in the public works. Any updates? Any projections?
No. Okay. All right, any more questions or concerns? Okay, we're gonna call for a vote. All in favor? Oppose?
Epstein.
All right, it's five and one abstention. 24.
Order authorizing mayor to execute an addendum to preliminary engineering services contract for the officer Thomas Ketchin Drive Bridge Replacement Project with StanTech Consulting Services, Inc.
So move. Second. It's been moved improperly. Second. Any questions or comments?
Question?
Yes, sir, Mr. Stokes?
Mr. Wright, this particular item, are they gonna replace the bridge? Is this, I know it's off of Thomas Ketchin's Drive. There's no rail right there now. So what's the overall plan?
Yes, Louis Wright, CAO. The overall plan is the replacement of this bridge on Thomas Ketchin Drive. And this order is just to extend the engineering contract. It was supposed to expire the end of this year. It's just extended it until another full year. They vax for an extension.
Now, we're talking about the bridge near the daycare center?
No, it's the one past the softball fields.
That's the, that's the big bridge past the softball field. That's 220.
It's not the one that's going over 220, over the interstate. There's another bridge in that area. It may be the one right there where the school lives in the daycare.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Okay, okay. All right, thank you.
Mr. Hartley?
Just another question. Will this extension, will that slow the process up? Any?
They have requested this extension and this is one that Mr. Al Turk, consulting firm, is working with them to make sure that they stay on schedule. So that's the value of having him to be project manager on a lot of these bridge projects.
I see. Again, I was just thinking, we give them two years and they'll take two years. Give them a year, they'll take a year. So...
Mr. Mayor?
Yes, I just want to be clear. The extension process or the request for that does not come just because a company asks for it. Our engineer in this instance, Mr. Alterich, looks at the validity of the request, whether some of the delays may have been on behalf of the City of Jackson. Therefore, he approves the request regardless, otherwise if there are delays, there are penalties within the contract that the contractor would be responsible for. So it very well may, I don't know this specific instance. Mr. Wright may be more familiar with the discussions with Mr. Alterich with respect to this particular contract. But if it is being advised that we provide the extension, then I just want to be clear that other factors haven't been considered in that process.
Mr. Foot?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. The, my question is, I just, really puzzles me that this is a preliminary engineering services contract to, you know, to figure out what to do about this bridge. And a year later, we don't, I would, I don't understand. I mean, one thing, to build the bridge, but this is just a contract to consult on building the bridge. And I'm puzzled that it, we have to wait a year and then, and now we're asking for an extension. I mean, I just, is StanTech, are they just backed up with business or something? I'm really puzzled by that.
This is the bridge that we, there were some concerns with, there was a water line that's attached to the bridge and engineers had to talk with Jackson Water to see whether or not they would be responsible for removing that water line that's running attached to the bridge. So in order to work all of that out, that is why some of the delays were associated with it.
All right, thank you. All right, any more questions or comments? All right, all in favor? Oppose?
Epstein.
All right, this is five and one abstention. Was, 411? You're opposed?
Oppose.
Okay, 411, thank you. 25?
Order authorizing the mayor to execute an addendum to the preliminary engineering services contract for the Ellis Avenue renamed Bobby Rush Boulevard Signal Improvement Project with StanTech Consulting Services, Inc.
So move. Second. It's been moved improperly. Second. Any questions or comments? All in favor? Six, zero. Thank you. Passes. 26?
Order authorizing payment of full and final settlement of all claims against the City of Jackson brought by plaintiff Robert Watts in the matter of Arthur et al. versus the City of Jackson, Mississippi et al. in the United States District Court for the Southern District of Mississippi, Northern Division Civil Action Number 323-CV-544-DPJ-ASH.
So move. Second. All right, it's been moved improperly. Second. Any questions or comments? All in favor? Oppose?
Epstein.
All right, five and one abstention. Passes. All right, 27?
Order upon James Henley Jr., Deputy Clerk of Council on a part-time basis.
So move.
Second.
It's been moved improperly. Second. Any questions or comments?
Who is this guy?
Yeah, I was trying to figure that out.
I'm gonna yield to Councilwoman Clay. Councilwoman Clay, if you don't mind introducing Mr. Henley, and I think you may have an amendment based on the conversation yesterday?
Okay, let's do the amendment first. In this order, there's an amendment. Instead of 20 hours per week maximum, it should be 30, 29 hours based on the math. So I move that we amend this to 29.
Okay, it's been moved improperly. Second. Any questions or comments on the amendment? All in favor? Any opposed? All right, passes six, zero. Thank you. Now we have the item as amended on the floor. Councilwoman Clay?
Okay. James Henley is a resident of Ward Two. He's an attorney and CPA in our ward and he has agreed to help me in the position of clerk of the council on a part-time basis. And I'm asking you guys to approve that and accept him.
Okay. Mr. Henley, do you have anything to offer today? My colleagues, we will do as normally and take one round if necessary. We'll... Nah, I'll just, oh, my bad.
May I?
Sure.
To the council, I think Ms. Clay covered it, but I was born and raised in Jackson. I'm a G N Smith, Brinkley Middle School, split time between Murray and Calaway. I'm a Calaway grad.
There you go.
We had to move over, went to Mills Haps College here in town, went to law school here in town, did seminary in New Orleans, New Orleans, still logical, seminary, which was meeting at Mississippi College. So I've basically been here my whole life. I left five years right after college, went to work for an accounting firm, Arthur Anderson in New Orleans. I was first African American they ever hired. Came back here. I left there and went to IBM where I'd interned. I was a system analyst there. Came back here, worked for peer committee, worked for Department of Justice with the group that basically did the analysis for disclosure statements and plans and chapter 11 reorganizations. Left there, became my chapter 13 bankruptcy trustee for approximately 23 years. And in addition, I passed a church for the past 20 years called Fresh Start Christian Church, which is in Ward Two and right on the bridge by Ward Three. And we try and do a lot of community stuff. If you looked at the Jackson Advocate this past week, the back page of the front section was all about what we've been doing in the community at Fresh Start. And so I look forward to Jackson as my home. I grew up in Shady Oak. My parents lived in Georgetown when I was more of two years. Then they moved to California Avenue. Then they moved to Woodhaven and forced me to graduate from Calaway. So...
Don't say "force."
Forced.
Don't say "force."
Forced.
Thank you, thank you for making that abundantly clear.
I am, I am a member of the Calaway Hall of Fame of athletic and academic, so.
Okay, very good. All right. Colleagues, let's take it to a vote. All in favor?
Of course, of course.
Yes, sir.
Thank you.
Athletic.
Yes, sir.
Oh, Lord. Which team, football, baseball, basketball?
Actually, I played football at both, two years at Murray and one year at Calaway, and I won each time. I played tailback, I also ran track, I ran the hurdles, I ran, back then it was three-hundred-and-thirty-yard hurdles, they're now the four-hundred-meter hurdles, back then they didn't think we could run the whole lap, I suppose, things have changed.
Reverend Dr. Henley's type of person, even though he's on the borderline for Ward Two and Three, he works hard with any and everybody who want to work and improve the community, and everybody thank him and love him for that. I don't know where he get all that energy from, probably from being a former athlete, but he'll be an asset to Ward Two, the City of Jackson, State of Mississippi, and the United States of America because he cares about people, so I'd be glad to vote for him, thank you.
Mr. Hartley? Yes, I was fortunate to serve on the Jackson Municipal Airport Authority with Reverend Henley, and can say without doubt that just one of the most competent folks that I know, especially in this subject areas. My only question is, why? There's a lot of, there's a lot of stuff, but I just, and I say that facetiously, but thank you for your service, and thank you for your willing to step up and serve the people of Jackson.
And I can really answer that question, he said why? Mr. Henley? We want to hold. All in favor, please? Thank you. Come on, preacher. It is hot in here, we about to go. Twenty-eight.
Resolution of the City Council of Jackson, Mississippi in support of the celebration of a Merry Christmas.
So move. Second, it's been moved in properly, second, and the questions or comments? All in favor? All right, six zero, let's go, twenty-nine.
Resolution of the City Council of Jackson, Mississippi in support of the Kwanzaa Celebration and wishing a happy and safe observance for all citizens.
So move. Second, it's been moved in properly, second, any questions or comments? All in favor? All right, six zero passes, twenty-nine.
Resolution.
Me third, I'm sorry.
Resolution of the City Council of Jackson, Mississippi in support of the celebration of a Happy New Year 2025.
So move.
Second.
It's been moved in properly, second, and the question or comments? All in favor? I think nobody's against this. Thirty-one?
Resolution of the City Council of Jackson, Mississippi in support of the 2025 Reverend Dr. Martin Luther King Jr. Birthday Celebration Observance.
So move. Second. See, he got them all out of the way. Any questions or comments?
One question, sir, Councilman Stokes, when will you be putting your calendar out? We should have it out, my donor law pushed a lot harder, everything should be out by the end of this week or early next week.
Okay, great.
But we did confirm with the commissioner of the SWAC to be the man of the year, and we trying to confirm with Jackson Heinz Director to be the woman of the year.
Okay.
So we trying to confirm with the football coach to get the Martin Luther King, Reverend Dr. Martin Luther King Jr. Award.
Okay.
And that's going to be on the ward's banquet Thursday before the national holiday.
Where you always have state.
As they say, at Jackson State.
Yes, sir. All in favor? All right, six zero. Thirty-two.
Order of the City Council of Jackson, Mississippi hiring attorneys Deshaun T. Martin and Martin and Martin P. A. Attorneys and Counselors as independent special counsel for and to the City Council of Jackson, Mississippi.
So move. Second, it's been moved in properly, second, and the questions or comments?
Discussion, Mr. President?
Yes, sir.
Thank you. Mr. President, under the form of government that we have, and really throughout the United States of America, the legislative branch of government, executive branch, and judicial branch are the branches, once the legislative branch of government approves an item, approves an order, the executive branch has the authority where they can sign it or veto it. The, under the law, once and if the executive branch vetoes an item, the legislative branch has the authority to override the veto. Not just in Jackson, Mississippi, not just in the State of Mississippi, but that's really all across the United States of America, and that's what happened with the contract for the chief of police and the fire chief. It was voted in by the Jackson City Council, the mayor followed state law vetoed the item, the council followed state law, overrode the mayor's veto. At that point, when the veto was overridden, it became law. Now, at this point, we have a conflict and a dispute between the executive branch and the legislative branch, and normally when you have those kind of conflicts, you go to the judicial branch, and that's how you solve problems. No one has to pull out a gun, knife, or fight, it's done through a court system, and that's what we have here today, a order to hire lawyer to represent this city. Thank you.
Any more questions or concerns or comments? All right, all in favor? Oppose? All right, fails. We're going to move now to discussion.
Move the vote, Mr. President.
Three, three. We're going to move now to...
Type vote means what?
It fails.
Everything else fails, so it fails.
Oh, no, no, type vote means come back. Type vote means it comes back.
You want to reconsider it now?
Oh, no, we'll wait, we'll wait, we don't have to wait.
Not a problem, all right, we're going to move to discussion, colleagues, number thirty-four, thirty-three, I'm sorry, Stokes?
We're going to hold up, Mr. President, we have a meeting tonight.
Not a problem.
Over in Vernon Edition.
Mr. Banks?
Yes, Mr. President, I move that we go into closed session to discuss...
Hold on.
Okay, all right, we not ready for that yet?
We, we...
Yeah, do we want to do announcements before we do that, so that we don't have to come?
I might make y'all wait, I don't know. Thirty-five, I only have thirty-four, I'm only getting that. Oh, thirty-five, all right.
I don't have thirty-five. I don't have thirty-five.
Monthly report of privileged taxes as required according to Section twenty-seven dash seventeen dash five oh one of the Mississippi Code annotated of nineteen seventy-two.
All right, colleagues, if you can give me your verbal that you received. Received. All right, received.
Right here.
Mr. Foot?
You're good to go.
Asked for a verbal, okay, Mr. Stokes?
I'm sorry.
All right, very good.
Good to go.
Stokes?
Ever received?
You have not?
No.
Okay, all right, Ms. Jordan says she'll make sure that you're received. Now, let's do announcements before we go into, take a motion to go into executive session. Mr. Mayor?
Yes, first and foremost, I'd like to thank all of those individuals, organizations, schools that participated in this past weekend's Christmas parade, and also the Christmas tree lighting ceremony, and I'm about to announce the winners. The third place winner for the float competition was the Bean Path, the second place winner was Community Improvement with the City of Jackson, and the first place winner for the holiday float competition was the Jackson Police Department.
Congratulations, any closing?
We are inviting our award winners to next week's council meeting to be recognized, and then the last thing that I'd like to close in, and this was already stated, but I'd like to say my own, again, recognizing the passing of Ms. Gail Green and also a good friend to the city, Mr. B.J. Norman.
Anyone else, colleagues?
Yeah.
Mr.? Mr. Foot?
Thank you, Mr. Chair, the, I'd like to give a shout out to the city clerks, or the, I mean, the city clerk's office for all the work they did in preparation for the Christmas parade, and it was a great time, and thank you so much.
Mr. Stokes?
Thank you, I want to, want to say, it was a great parade, it was a great parade. It was, you know, when you think of parades, you measure parades in like Mardi Gras, you can measure trash until how many people been there, but like a Christmas parade, measured by children, the smiles on these children's face, these children enjoyed that parade, the mothers enjoyed, the fathers had their children out, it was a family parade that, you know, somewhere down the line, we need to thank the Jackson Police Department, everyone associated, there was no violence, none whatsoever, a night parade, most night parades, you know, you go to New Orleans, that's where Mardi Gras at night, but people don't just have a lot of night parade, but this parade was, and Bobby Rush, one thing, Mr. Bobby Rush were doing a wonderful job as the, as the grand master of the parade, he was right there himself, you know, and I think everybody just really appreciated seeing his sound and his manner, you know, they know they've been good, but I want to close in honor of Ms. Gail Green, again, former city, former deputy clerk, Mr. Paul... Who is, please mute your mic. King Floyd Junior, Ms. Willie Mae, Willie Lee Lottie Gray, legendary gospel artist, Mr. J.B. Mass, everyone with Ms. J.B. Mass, ninety-plus years young, his mother used to participate in the Dr. King Parade, she passed when she was a hundred-plus years young, and also again, Chef B.J. Norman, the family centers a, in acknowledgement, and they want to thank the City of Jackson and Heinz County for everything that they did in honor of their son, so, you know, Chef Norman will be greatly missed, thank you, Mr. President.
All right, Mr. Hartley?
Yes, I just want to express the condolences to the family of Eric Danell Alden, who was buried yesterday, service yesterday, he's a noted musician, artist, audio, I'd say genius, but one of the first ones to open up a center over in the Metro Mall, just condolences to his family, and one, one note to the administration, do you know if we have him roll off dumpster day this coming weekend? Okay.
We'll, we'll have Ms. Lakeisha Weathers provide that information, we'll send out a memo to the council.
All right, Mr. Banks?
All right, announcement's done. All right, Mr. President, I move that we go into closed session to discuss going into executive session to discuss and potentially take up items nine, eleven, and thirteen. Item nine will be due to potential litigation on unpaid bills, item eleven is current litigation, and item thirteen, of course, is a discussion about litigation, and again, this is closed session to go into, to discuss, go into executive session to discuss and possibly take up those items.
Is there a second?
Second.
All right, it's been moved in properly, second, and the questions or comments? All in favor? Oppose? Okay, five one, all right, thank you. If you are not a party to this conversation, please... All right, we are out, now out of executive session, and there was no official action taken, is there anything else to come before this body? Hearing none, this meeting is adjourned.